Just gonna start coming in attending.
Morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Putnam County Border County Commissioners Meeting for Tuesday, July 26, 2022. Just want to welcome everybody here this morning. We'll begin our meeting by asking Pastor Chaplain Ted Stackpole with U.S. Missions and Foster Adoption to come forward to deliver our invocation, and then we'll ask Commissioner Turner to lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
Would you bow your heads with me? Dear Heavenly Father, as David pens the question in Psalms 121, "From where does our help come from?" He also makes the declaration that his help comes from the Lord, who's the Maker of heaven and earth. Today, as Putnam County Commissioners in our community look for help, guidance, and direction, may we find confidence in your greatness as well. I give thanks for continuing to bring synergy, unity, and focus to that which matters. I give thanks for innovation, visioneering, and aspirations wrapped up in our committees and work groups, and I believe your word that declares that as the heavens are higher than the earth, so your ways are higher than our ways and your thoughts than our thoughts. And I declare that Putnam County will continue to move forward towards good health, stable jobs, higher education, and thriving families. Today, I lift up my head in confidence that our help truly does come from the Lord. In the name of Jesus, I pray, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
Wherever it is. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain Stackpole. It's always good to see you. And thank you, Commissioner Turner and staff. If you could alert us when you're gonna move the flag. It's been over to the right for a few months now, so anyway.
They're not lifting it.
Okay. Okay, gentlemen, Commissioner Adamsak is not with us this morning. I hope he will join us. Has anybody heard from Commissioner Adamsak?
I talked to him the other day. He said that he was feeling out of the weather, but he thought he may be able to make this afternoon's meeting.
Okay, alright.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes that are in our agenda.
Second.
Okay, we've got a proper motion to approve the minutes as presented and a proper second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side. Okay, we'll move down to the 905 certain solid waste collection and disposal district, adopting the resolution and setting solid waste assessments and user fees for fiscal year 2223. I know that the mayors are from Interlock and Palatka and Crescent City on this particular board. I do not see any of them. I guess we can go ahead and proceed without them?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. We were huddled up over here having a conversation. I apologize.
Okay, on the solid waste collection, I know that the mayor of Crescent City, Interlock and Palatka are on this particular board, and I do not see them, but we can go ahead and proceed?
I believe you can, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, I wanna, I spoke with Mayor Myers from Crescent City, and she has an issue that she had to take care of this morning, and she sends her regrets that she could not make it, but she is aware of the information that'll be presented. So we'll turn this over to Julianne.
Thank you, Commissioner. In your packets is a agenda packet for the solid waste assessment and user fees for fiscal year 2223. In summary, based upon the current onsite leachate treatment costs and other ongoing landfill development and monitoring requirements, the landfill operation portion of the solid waste assessment and user fee will be decreased from $125 to $100. Based upon the increase in cost of services, the recycling component will increase from 39 to 40 per household. This will result in a combined cost of $141 from the pre $23 reduction from the prior year for those households that do not experience collection. So that would be the city of Crescent City and the city of Palatka. For the remaining households, for the collection portions, the solid waste user fee will be the 276, which is a decrease from last year of $17. That's in summary of the items before you. Recommended action is to adopt the resolution setting the special assessment and tipping fees for the 2223 fiscal year.
Okay, Commissioners, any discussion or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, excuse me, Commissioner, you're first, Commissioner Turner. We gotta get this fixed because Turner is turning on Commissioner Harvey's light.
Yeah, I got an upgrade today.
Exactly. Alright, so Commissioner Turner?
Yes, I just wanna make sure that I understand that it's real easy to do this quick and that I won't make sure that we have full transparency here, and that would be that we were able to drop the solid waste assessment again this year for the third time, I believe it is, and we were able to do it another $17 this year off the solid waste assessment. But that doesn't include the fact that not only recycling, but curbside pickup went up $12 between the two of them or in that neighborhood. So this is really close to almost a $30 deduction in the what it would have been if we hadn't had the increase that was allowed through the pickup, solid waste pickup. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, that we're slowly working on this assessment. Hopefully, one day we'll get it down to where there is no assessment for Putnam County. I don't know that we'll get there, but we're definitely working it in the right direction with all the increase in fuel costs and everything else that's going on at the landfill and with collection people. So we are definitely heading in the right direction, and I was just glad to see that we could do a 17 this year instead of a break even because I don't know if everybody else has been to the gas pumps lately, but I'm sure you have, and the fuel has gone crazy. And even though it's come down a little at the moment, it's still crazy compared to a year ago. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, everybody's attention, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Turner. Commissioner Harvey, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I kinda wanna echo what Commissioner Turner said, you know, years ago when I first got here, landfill part of it was up for sale, and I fought real hard for that not to happen because it has a big potential to save the citizens of Putnam County money, and we don't have to be beholden to somebody else. And Commissioner Turner, I wanna say thank you for taking the lead on this, for what you did, and also wanna say to Mr. Tilton and our staff, good job. I mean, seriously, great job getting the right people in, the right seats on the bus to get this moving forward. Every year we see a little bit reduction. We don't see, you know, it's not a huge reduction, but like Commissioner Turner said, it would have been had the other fees gone up. But anytime we can put money back into our citizens' pockets, that's a win-win for me. And garbage is one of those things that you wanna get rid of as quick as you possibly can. And truly, you're, you know, our hauler, everybody does a really wonderful job in this county. I wish people didn't go out in the woods and dump. There's no need to do that. There's no need for that at all, but, you know, we have a really well-run sanitation department and landfill, and we have a really great waste hauler. So I'm just excited about the future of Putnam County, and I think anytime we can put any money back in our citizens' pocket, it's a win-win for this board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. And I'll comment on it also and thank Commissioner Turner for his efforts with solid waste. And also, Jay, thank you for coming on board and doing what you've done out there with your staff in creating efficiencies and different things that, that, you know, saves money and improves performance. So we sure appreciate that. So Commissioner Rawls.
Today's backwards day. I just, I wanna echo the same sentiments that was already stated. I think it's actually four years in a row. I know the year before I got elected, there was a reduction as well, so, or the year I got elected. So I think this is a great thing, as we continue to move forward with some of the advancements that are on the horizon for the landfill. If any of those come to fruition, it's gonna be even more of a win-win. And I think, you know, we might all live long enough to see the day that we don't really have a solid waste fee, that it pays us in return. So congratulations. Thank you to the staff, and I think this is great for the citizens.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Turner?
I'd like to move that we pass Resolution Number 2022-073, establishing a solid waste special assessment and user fees.
Second.
We've got a proper motion and a proper second to adopt the user fees and assessments. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side.
I thought he lit up his light. I'm sorry.
Okay, we're good? Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move down to presentations. Item A, and this one is a bittersweet. There comes a time in everybody's life when it's time to maybe retire and move on to the next phase of their life. And I'd like to ask Ms. Sharon Trine, County Extension Director, for 22 years to come to the podium. I'll meet you with a little thing we want to honor you with. I hope everyone, the Commissioners, will say a few things about Sharon. I've been a Commissioner, this is my sixth year, and it's just been a true pleasure to deal with her as far as her capacity with UF and IFIS and the Extension Agent and Director with agriculture and all the different things that she does. Besides the point that probably the first time I met her when I was a new Commissioner and they invited the Commissioners yearly to go for like a Christmas dinner, Thanksgiving dinner, and it was absolutely fantastic. I hope that will continue in your absence. But it was truly neat to go over there and share a meal that they had prepared. A lot of the stuff was grown at their facilities and prepared by staff, and we would get updates from the staff, from the staff about that. So, or you're giving them directions, so, okay. But anyway, we just wanna honor Sharon today. And as far as the Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners presented to Sharon Trine, County Extension Director, for 22 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Putnam County and the Board of County Commissioners, and she was always also recognized as Superior Compliment Award in 2018 for UF and IFIS. So let's give her a hand for her accomplishments.
Sure. Thank you. Yes, I'm already, my husband's already very nervous because I'm giving him directions, so. Thank you so much. I have a total of 39 years with the Cooperative Extension System between Louisiana and Florida, and I've spent over half of my career in Putnam County, 22 years, two different times. And so it's been an honor to serve the citizens for a total of 22 years in Putnam County. I'm very appreciative of the Commissioner's support, county administration's support of myself and our department. I will carry, Putnam County was where I moved to from Louisiana in 1989, so I have a long history here. I met my husband here 33 years ago, so I have a lot of very fond personal and professional memories here. So I will make sure that the new Extension Director knows through tradition of the Christmas holiday luncheon to carry that on. And I know that whoever takes my position will continue to move the office forward and meet the needs of the Putnam County citizens, so.
With big shoes to fill.
Oh, well, thank you. Well, I had very big shoes to fill, which I did with Austin Tilton, which I did not even come close to filling. Austin is the one that hired me in 1989, and he was just such a fabulous mentor, the best mentor I ever had. So I'm very grateful for his guidance. So thank you for that.
Come down.
Commissioner Turner?
I have a comment that should have been made under the solid waste collection and disposal district area. Can we go back to that, or is it too late, or do I need to do it under Commissioner comments at the end?
Legal.
Legal.
Okay, we'll reconvene the solid waste committee.
Yeah, thank you, and my apologies, Mr. Chairman. It's come to my attention, and we can't do it right now, but I think we need to look at discontinuing curbside pickup for recyclables. It costs $41 a year, only 17% of the people use it, and I'm not saying that we need to stop recycling. Let's make that perfectly clear, I'm not. We just need to take a little different avenue at it. In other words, put in collection boxes at the, at the convenience sites, a few of the fire stations that are in between those sites to make them conveniently located. And then next year, that would give us the opportunity to knock possibly around another $30 off the assessment to everybody in the county. So I'm not, I just wanna make it perfectly clear that I'm not even close to saying that we should stop recycling. Quite the contrary. We just don't need to be paying, the county doesn't need to be paying a million dollars a year for curbside pickup on recycling when only 17% or less of the people are using it. So we'll make convenience sites. We won't be able to give back the whole $41.
Convenience.
Because there's gonna be expenses in us going out picking up the collection boxes and things like that, but I think we should prob, we could probably give back around $30, and it could vary a dollar or two either way when the people, the staff puts a pencil actually to it. But I think it's something we need to consider. We couldn't do it this year because our contract stated that we could not stop this contract until with, until, Rich, you may have to help me here, 2023, October 1st, 2023 is the first date that we could, that we could stop the contract with 90 days notice. So we couldn't do, I thought maybe we could do it this year. We can't. It's not in, our contract doesn't allow it. So as of sometime during this year, I request a workshop that we discuss how we could replace curbside recycling with collection recycling for substantial savings to every taxpayer, for every homeowner in Putnam County. So I felt like that needed to be said under the solid waste district, and so thank you for opening that back up for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Turner. Okay, any other comments? Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn the solid waste and reconvene the regular Board of County Commissioners meeting, and we'll move it down to item B, recognitions, Employee of the Month, and we'll ask Sarah Carone and JR Grimes and any of the other staff that would like to come down to honor Ms. Colleen Underwood, Putnam County Fire and Rescue for Employee of the Month and her family. Any of her family would like to come down also?
Here comes Mama. Good morning. So Ms. Underwood was selected as Employee of the Month for June, and some of the excerpts from the nomination are that Lieutenant Underwood is always sharing positivity, past growth, and potential growth for the future of our department. She is a true asset and assists greatly with employee retention. She's also the animal rescuer. She saves more cats, dogs, and other miscellaneous animals than any other employee to date. So we like that. She also participates in assisting training new medics and assists with training the paramedics. So congratulations.
I'd just like to mention for a minute, Colleen's a pure example of just an outstanding employee. This is a package of just nothing but energy. Every time I've ever seen her, there's not one ounce of quit in her. She'll, she'll go with, all day long, with a smile on her face, and she is just an exemplary employee that we are honored to have at Putnam County. Thank you.
Good deal. Good deal.
Thank you.
I'd also like to echo all the comments about Colleen. She is one of the best employees that we have. I wish we had about 100 more of her. But yeah, she, she really makes the shift easy to run. She helps me whenever I can't do something and be in two places at one time. Anything I ask her to do, it really does get done. She is an animal lover. She does, you know, put stickers of cats in places that probably shouldn't be putting pictures of cats. But other than that, we're not gonna mention all the stuff she's hit with ambulances and fire trucks, you know, wild animals running out in front of her. But, but she does love her job. She loves the citizens of Putnam County, and it's really evident in her daily life and her, her daily service to the citizens. Thank you, Colleen.
Good deal. Good deal.
Colin, would you like to say anything?
Thank you.
Since Paul mentioned, I did read the whole thing, and that you had probably saved more cats and dogs and other animals than all of the other employees together. So it won't go back to the one that you didn't save, I guess. So anyway, I'm sure that was a unique experience, so.
Congratulations, Colin.
Thank you.
You've got the hands and the soul.
Gold hands, warm heart.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mom, thanks for sharing with us.
True, the best part of the Commissioner's job is to be able to recognize employees for their service. And Colleen, we thank you. We'll move down to item C. Julianne, we'll give us the countywide project update.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a reminder, this is not intended to be an all-inclusive list of every project or initiative underway by county departments. It's intended to be a snapshot of those most important to our citizens, our commission, or our administration. With that, we will begin with the administration project of the Barge Port feasibility study conducted by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer is in progress. A consultant-composed economic report to reinforce the feasibility study is pending submission to the Corps. The application for Port Infrastructure Development Program grant with the United States Maritime Administration has been submitted and is currently being reviewed. Staff is commencing application process to the Florida Ports Council as stipulated by the Florida House Bill 907, which was signed into law by Governor DeSantis earlier this month. The animal control facility conceptual plans are complete. The BOCC directed staff to pursue a design build firm at workshop. Staff is developing the specifications for selection. Building and grounds has roofing projects. The agricultural extension office is complete. The governmental complex is roughly at 80% of completion. The emergency services division is going through an ISO rating update. After a year of collecting data on our ISO rating, they are moving to the pre-survey period. The pre-survey has actually been completed at this time. We will now move into the six-months review period. The goal is to have a countywide ISO effective in October of 2022. IT has miscellaneous projects. Workstation deployments are in progress. The PC deployments to various BOCC departments to replace aging and out-of-warranty systems is complete, and the clerk of court deployments for the same purposes are slated to begin this month. The phone system E911 slash caller ID updates is in progress. Networking is working to update the E911 address and caller IDs for the phone system. The project is ongoing. Network security assessment is in progress. Networking on a comprehensive assessment of our network and potential security issues, this is an ongoing project. SmartCop map project nearing completion. GIS has submitted their final map for review to SmartCop and currently awaiting feedback for the rollout. GIS stack has been completed. The servers for the new GIS stack have been provisioned, set up by Esri, and the data migration will be completed over the next six months. Storage servers is complete. Our storage servers have arrived and are provisioned for use. The Nutanix cluster is in progress. The hardware has arrived, and implementation is scheduled for the end of July with data migration to follow. The Parks and Rec Georgetown project update, UF IFIS is, has made a presentation, an initial presentation to staff, and will be completing their documents and sending it to staff to present to the BOCC soon thereafter. The Flora Home Park Historic Building, the Flora Home Park Historic Association is glad to report that on Monday they passed the framing and rough electrical, plumbing, and HVAC inspections. On Saturday, they will have a workday scheduled to install the insulation in the building and are currently trying to coordinate with subcontractors to complete the connection of the water and electricity to the building. of the water and electricity to the building. Parks and Recreation Pickleball at Triangle Park, an intent-to-award has been issued to court services and staff is seeking board approval for the award at the August ninth B O C C meeting. Public Works Fort Gate Ferry Landing, the welding activities are underway and the project is anticipated to be completed in October of twenty twenty-two. St. John's Avenue Resurfacing, Palm to C S X Crossing at the Palaca Fire Department, a proposed contract for C E I services is on this morning's agenda for formal approval, concurrence to advertise for construction services can be obtained from F D O T once the C E I contract has been awarded. Advertisement for construction services is anticipated in August of twenty twenty-two. The County Road three ten Bridge Rehabilitation, Public Works has submitted the submerged land easement shift and is waiting the completely executed easements to be obtained. Advertisement for construction services is anticipated in August. Subject to sewer conversion phase three, the award for construction contract has been completed and the pre-construction meeting is anticipated in August. Salem Sawyer and Bull Green Drainage Projects, the final list items are being addressed. Dirt to pave fiscal year twenty twenty-one, construction is underway, the paving activities have been completed on Tropic and Whitetail, the majority of Norwood has been paved, North Lake George Drive, South Lake George Drive, Palm Drive, Sandy Street, Ida Dixon Lloyd, Nancy Ave, and Lynn Drive have been primed and are scheduled for paving in September. Balsam Walt Cypress and Atkins are scheduled to be primed and ready for paving by the end of this month. Darren Drive is scheduled to begin construction activities in October, all roads are scheduled to be completed by December of twenty twenty-two. Dirt to pave fiscal year twenty twenty-two, the survey work has been completed, a proposal was obtained for design services and will be presented to the board during the August twenty-third twenty-two transportation meeting. East Putnam Drainage and Flooding Mitigation Phases one through four, notice to proceed has been issued to the contractor and they are planning to begin work July of twenty twenty-two on Phase three. Phase four permitting and design activities are underway, Phases one and two are complete. St. John's Avenue Drainage Improvements, State Road nineteen to County Road three oh nine C, the pre-construction meeting has been completed and the construction activities are scheduled to commence in August of twenty twenty-two. St. John's Avenue Multi-Use Trail, Public Works has obtained the completely executed supplemental agreement two from F D O T for the time extension. Countywide Drainage Improvements, all punch list items have been addressed and the project is officially complete. South Palm Sidewalk, Drew Street to Silver Lake Drive, the bids for construction activities were obtained July sixth, twenty twenty-two, and Public Works is currently waiting for concurrence to award from the, from F D O T. Saratoga Harbor Drainage Projects, Public Works is currently researching alternative means of repairing the weirs and as well as waiting on the corresponding quotes. The item is anticipated to be discussed during the August twenty-third transportation meeting. James A. Long and Dingotts Middle School Safe Routes to School, a hundred percent of the design plans are under review by F D O T. County Road three fifteen Resurfacing Project, the thirty percent design plans are complete, sixty percent design plans are scheduled to be obtained on August fifth, and the final design is expected to be completed by January twenty twenty-three. Port Buena Vista Water, Wastewater Treatment Plant Conversion and Sewer Main Extension, advertisement for construction services is anticipated in September of twenty twenty-two. Paradise Point Sewer System Hardening and Generator Installation, advertisement for construction is anticipated August of twenty twenty-two. Countywide Guardrail Installation Repairs and Replacements, the award for the construction contract has been completed and the pre-construction meeting is anticipated for August. Countywide Road Resurfacing for Fiscal Year twenty-two, the bids have been obtained to complete the project and discussion involving the recommendation to award is anticipated at the August twenty-third transportation meeting. Countywide Striping Project, the award for the construction contract has been completed and the pre-construction meeting is anticipated for August of twenty twenty-two. East Palaca Septic to Sewer Project Phase four, Public Works is currently waiting on a proposal from the engineering consultant to complete the design criteria package. Public Works anticipates having the criteria package complete in October of twenty twenty-two and to advertise for a design-build firm in November of twenty twenty-two. Countywide Bridge Repairs, the bids have been obtained and a discussion involving the recommendation to award is on this afternoon's transportation agenda. East Palaca Water Plant retrofit, the bids have been obtained and a discussion involving the recommendation to award is anticipated at the August twenty-three, twenty twenty-two transportation workshop. Varden Ranchette Road Resurfacing Project, advertisement for construction is anticipated in August of twenty twenty-two. Sanitation Cell four A Construction, four A is nearing completion, the final drawings have been received and sent to D E P, we are waiting on a scheduled inspection date and then it should be in use. This completes my report.
Okay, thank you, Julianne. Yeah, a lot of projects are going on in Putnam County, thank you, Julianne, for that update. Any questions from commissioners? Okay, all right, seeing none, we'll move down to item five, public comment on agenda items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It is not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberation about matters in which the board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. We asked you that you fill out a comment card there at the entrance and the exit of the B O C C chambers, and if you'll give them to Ashley on my left, you're right. Any individuals wishing to make public comment on agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move down to item, sir?
I'm wondering whether you need to make out a public comment card to make a comment or a conversation with your commissioners?
Okay, you don't, you don't have to, is it on an agenda item or is this general public comment?
This is general public comment.
Okay, that'll be in just a few minutes then.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay, and we'll move down to the consent agenda item, and commissioners, we have two items, one of the items, Mr. Seoffi, do you want to make a comment on this item, or do we need to just pull it? Just pull it?
If we could go ahead and pull it for discussion.
Pulling item B, is that one you're talking about?
Yeah, okay. All right, we'll start with Commissioner Turner, any items you want to pull?
B, please.
Commissioner Harvey?
I have none.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
I have none.
Okay, and I have none since item B is pulled.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't really have any, any particular questions on item B, it's just that we haven't vetted it yet, and I would like if Mr. Seoffi could just come up and, and give us a, his comment on actually what we're doing, and I know that it has to be done every yearly, I think it is, but anyhow, we have to do this. I just was wondering, have we opened up rhetoric with the different municipalities to let them know that we're, that we're changing our interlocal agreements? We have no choice because of the federal flood, flood, flood plane management system.
Yes, sir, well, our, we already handle flood plane management for building permits, the state flood plane manager's office wants it in writing to memorialize that we handle that for the municipalities.
Okay, so all we're doing is putting in writing what we're already doing and agreed to.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yeah, thank you, and I, I appreciate that because I had some questions last night and this morning, got them answered, appreciate it, Mr. Seoffi, it looks like we're just memorializing it, so I, I, I actually, well, I'm done, thank you.
Okay.
I think I jumped the gun, I apologize, we didn't pass item A.
I didn't pass, so it's.
I'm, I'm moved that we pass items A and B.
Second.
Will that be okay? Okay, got a proper motion by Commissioner Turner, proper second by Commissioner Harvey to approve item A and item B as it slipped by me. So any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, can I say aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign.
Kind of threw me off my game there for a minute.
All right, so we'll move down to item seven, code enforcement, ask Mr. Thomas Moore to come forward. We have one code case for a fine reduction, code case twenty twenty-one dash zero zero three nine seven.
The address is one four eight Lake Margot Drive, property owner's name is Paulette Living Trust, Sharon Paulette Trustees, violation was care premises, the original fine amount was four thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents, total cost of enforcement action was one thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars. The property owner has recently purchased the property, is now compliant, and is requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend a reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Okay, any questions of staff by commissioners? Okay, is applicant here or owner here?
No, sir.
Okay, no, okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved that the board accepts the one thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars of pay within ninety days.
Second.
Okay, we've got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey to accept the fine reduction down to one thousand one seventeen, which is paid in ninety days, is that what it is?
That's right.
Ninety days, and we got a second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, can I say aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Okay, move down to item eight, Honorable Matt Reynolds, Clerk of Court.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I don't have anything this morning, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you, Matt. And we'll move down to appointments, I'll start with Commissioner Rawls.
I have none.
Commissioner Harvey?
I have none.
Commissioner Turner?
I have none, sir.
And I have none also. So we'll move down to item ten, public comment on miscellaneous items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board, it is not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberation on matters in which the board has received no prior information. Please limit your comments to three minutes, we would appreciate if you'd fill out a comment card, it's not necessary, we would like to have them for the record. If you'll come to the podium, want to call your name and state your name and address for the record and speak clearly into the microphone. Mr. Bill Thompson?
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Bill Thompson, one, two, three, Kingfish Avenue, Palaca, Florida. I am the chairman of the Citizens Advisory Group for St. John's Harbor Unit Three, M S B U. Came to the hearing last month on the M S B U, and we asked that the M S B U be abolished since it no longer has a benefit at the cost, and we were told to, we had to have a meeting and get people to agree, which we did on the seventeenth of July, had seventeen homeowners present, the vote was sixteen to one to abolish the M S B U. Okay, and this package is a letter signed by me stating that, also in that package is a petition signed by fifty homeowners, this is not people that own property and live somewhere else, these are people that live that also agree to abolish the M S B U. So it's back in your court, you know, under Florida statute, you can do that, you told me you had to send out letters to everybody, if that's the case, then let's get the letters out, let's make sure they state that they're gonna pay more if they keep the M S B U. So with that, that's all I have to say.
Okay, Commissioner Turner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill, I'm the one that said if you brought that official letter to me, that I'd make the motion. Now, could I, would it be in public comment that we just need to place it back on the, the next workshop to talk about and do it then? Because I, I'm good for my word, I'll make, I'll make the motion at the most, at the appropriate time to send it out, send the letter out like we said, and if it comes back fifty one, fifty percent plus one, I'll also make the motion for you to abolish.
Well, we have to make sure the letter is very clear to the facts, that if we keep the M S B U, that those property owners are gonna pay another two hundred dollars per lot, it's not partial, it's per lot. So, okay.
If we try to get that in.
We need to put this on the next.
Maybe if we could come up with a tentative, would it, would it be possible to come up with a tentative letter and actually bring that to workshop on what we would like to send out to the, because we've got the letter from the, we've got the letter from the committee, so could we bring the tentative letter along with it to workshop and then they can look at it for their review at the workshop along with the, the motion to go ahead and send out the letter after it's been approved?
Absolutely, sir, we'll, we'll make sure that happens, we'll have it as part of the packet.
Thank you, Bill, for your effort on this.
All right, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Rawls, I'm sorry.
Last time we met, we were still talking the idea of giving the number for paving. Would you want to see that number in the letter? I can't hear you. I'm sorry, my mic is off. Last time we met as a group, y'all wanted to see the numbers on paving, are y'all still interested in seeing those numbers in this letter?
Well, that letter that went out did state all the facts.
Right.
So, you know, it, no, we did not get more signatures because we didn't really know how to go about it. You know, I mean, we can't go out to people that live in New York, we don't have those addresses. So, you know, could we come up with fourteen more signatures, I think that was the number required, probably.
No, no, the question is, if, if we're gonna send out a letter asking if people want to abolish the M S B U or go forward with the M S B U, do you think we should have the language in there that includes the option of paving if we can get those numbers together?
If you have the numbers, but the letter that went out last time was just a waste.
Right.
Because it didn't state the facts, it had no cost, it, you know, it didn't tell them, the people that, property owners, that, oh, if you don't go with paving, we're gonna increase your fees two hundred dollars per lot anyway.
And if, if the M S B U is abolished, what level of service we all be looking for at that point, I think y'all need to be discussing that.
Coming into the county maintenance system, whatever that is. I mean, we pay for that service anyway, regardless.
Okay.
I think this does deserve a lot more attention in, in regards to a meeting, maybe even a special meeting, because I would imagine there's gonna be a lot of turnout for it.
Okay, Commissioner Turner?
I just think we need to respect the decision of the committee. I talked to them about this when they all were here before and said that we just wanted to make sure that we represent everybody as much as we can, and that if you bring an official letter from the committee stating what you want, I would do my best to accommodate, I'm not gonna change that. So if we'll, we'll do the workshop, y'all bring it, if you change your mind between now and then that you want to try to look at trying to come up with some paving cost and put that on there in addition to abolishment, I don't see how you could do really both and, and have a letter that's not confusing as hell, so I don't, I think you're either gonna have to go one way or the other as a committee, and if you decide to go that way, I'll be on board with you, I told you I would before, and I'm not kidding, I mean, I would be on board with you.
Well, my concern is we get the letter out, we get the results back before this budget committee that's coming up next month, or September, whenever it is, so we don't get hit with a two hundred dollar increase regardless, for no service, so, you know.
What is that, what is that timeline? Because I agree with him. Yeah, we don't want to, if they're gonna abolish the M S B U, we surely don't want to then turn around and, and it go out on the trim notices that they're gonna have to spend another two hundred dollars a year when they're not even gonna have an M S B U any longer, that's a valid concern.
Mr. Chairman, to answer the question, I, I don't want to speak in, you know, in fact, I'm here for the property appraiser's office, but I believe the trim notice comes out sometime around the first week of August, first or second week of August.
We already might be too late.
We might be, yes, sir.
All we can do, Bill, is try to call it off and maybe they, and maybe send a letter that if they abolish it, they don't have to pay that on their upcoming next year's taxes for this year, correct, or, I don't know, I can get in the evil eye over there, so I may not, that may not be possible either, but if there's something that we can do here to help you out, I'll be on board with you.
Okay, I mean, I know the commissioners have the power right here now to abolish it under the Florida statute.
As I explained last time, Bill, I'm not gonna do that without sending out a letter to all property owners, I just think that's the fair thing to do. If I lived there, I would at least like to be noticed one way or the other if it's gonna be there or not be there or whatever.
Yeah, like I said, I just want that letter to be, have all the facts in it.
Right, yes, sir. That's why I hope you'll come and look at it and see if it suits you or whatever.
I'd be happy to.
Okay, Mr. Harvey?
Thank you.
Adams, excuse me, Rawls?
So, just to be clear, I agree with Commissioner Turner, I don't mind abolishing it, but I, I really think we owe it to you guys to give you one hundred percent of everything you need to make an informed decision, whether it be staying the course and, and stay with your, your grading, or maybe shift into paving, it may save money, it may cost more money, we don't know yet, or abolish the M S B U and make sure that everybody has a full understanding of what the level of service would be. I do know that you have some roads on the twenty twenty-three dirt-to-pave list, but it's not much, so you guys got a little over four miles out there that have to be dealt with, and you're talking about, you know, six tenths of a mile, so it's, it's not gonna be a cure-all for anything, so I, I think we owe it to everybody to get as informed as possible, but I think staff owes you the cost of what it would be to pay those, we've been kicking this can around for a very long time.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last statement.
I said, we've been kicking this can, we've been kicking this can around, but the paving, they've been asking for the paving numbers for a very long time. I think we need to get them all the information so they can make an informed decision.
Thank you, I heard it that time. Thank you.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you. Is there, Rich, is there any way that we could possibly talk about this at Transportation Workshop today? As far as the timelines, that might give Mike and Nilda a chance to put some timelines together and see if it's even a possibility? That we can, if we have the, can we put it on today? Not make a final decision, but just come back and revisit it at the workshop today?
You can talk about it, but I think those timelines have passed as far as this year, like Commissioner Turner said.
Is it possible, even though they would send it out, that you, they would not have to pay it? I mean, is it?
Yeah, because.
That's a property appraiser and tax collector question.
We don't finalize our role till, but.
We can certainly discuss the estimated construction costs based off of historical costs that we spent with dirt to pave. We can present that at the meeting.
That's not what we're talking about.
No, again, for those items right there, as Rich Command indicated, probably have to speak.
About, could we hit our timelines by, by the time, do you have enough time to see if we can hit our timelines today? For a meeting this afternoon that we can talk about?
With regards to which items you're referring to?
For abolishing the MSBU total.
As far as, oh, as far as getting out of it where the fees aren't assessed?
Right.
I'm not aware of what the exact dates on that. I'd have to research that further.
I want to get with Nilda. If we can have that discussion.
My biggest concern is that we don't give them time to research it properly. That we'll give inaccurate information and we'll be worse off than if we just put it off a little while. So, you know, I, I'm good for talking about it this afternoon again, but I just don't want a, a shot from the hip answer. I just, you know, if you have time to research it, if you don't, then come and say, look, I just don't know yet.
We can certainly look into it between now and then. Thank you.
Mike, could you also look and see if they're all class one, roads twos, whatever they are, and have that information? Because that's gonna dictate the level of service.
We'll, we'll do that as well.
Chairman, I apologize. Ms. Nilda, who is very dedicated, is watching the meeting live and, and trying to send a message. So she is stating that she presents the agenda item to certify the role at the August twenty-third meeting, which would be the drop dead date that we would either impose the fee or drop it to meet DOR requirements.
So we do have another, another first meeting of next month to be able to deal with this. We don't have to do it this afternoon. And we should give them time to look into it.
But what's our mailing time?
The turnaround, the question's gonna be, how long are you gonna give the residents to reply to your mail-out?
It takes ten days to write an email out.
Right.
Okay, we can bring it up.
We'll, we'll bring it up this afternoon.
My, my concern is the mail time. Okay, so I think that we solve that problem, we can get there.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Francis Gassen?
Sorry, I didn't mean to just jump in. My name is Francis Gassen. I live at one-six-nine Benita Drive, Palaca, Florida. Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I was one of the, I'm a committee member on the MSBU. And I was one of the ones that walked door to door, not one day, but maybe three, four days. Every person I talked to, except one, was totally fed up. Their service that we've had has been junked. The service we got from the new guy is no good. And they're all like, you know, the road right now is really good. You know why? Public Works came in and did that. They didn't drag the road and throw the dirt all over our yards and make it where we couldn't keep our yards clean and, and keep the place nice. But here we go. We need to get rid of it. It's, it's, it's not working. I, I talked to a gentleman that was on, one of the first MSBU's when it started. And he's like, it's outlived its usefulness. It's no longer working the way it's supposed to. So that's all I can tell you. I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next is Mr. Jim Oliviz Hendricks, correct?
Nice to finally meet you in person, Mr. Hendricks.
Yes, sir.
I've talked a lot to you, with you on the email.
My pleasure talking with you. And first, I want to thank you all for being here and I want to thank all the department heads for the excellent job they do in this county. And I'll start with the solid waste. I'm from Indiana originally and there I was home a couple of months ago. And I went to the landfill and it's fifty dollars a ton, four, four ton minimum. So it's two hundred dollars if I take a load of drywall there, even if it's only a pickup truck load. And the private contractors take care of the, the door pickup and it's thirty dollars a month. And you get three bags in your, your barrel every, every week for that. I just wanted to make you a comparison. And I listen, I see the, the pickup people and the trucks come by the house always pleasant on time. You know, I move my barrel back so they don't have to stop once. For two neighbors, they're doing a great job and that reflects your leadership from the top down. And if it's poor service, I'd be here to tell you that too, believe me. But what I'm here for today really is to talk about the Dunn's Creek Bridge and the removal of the ramp. I've been here since nineteen ninety-seven. I live at four-one-nine Mill Street here in Malaca now. And I did live on Hunken Shortcut Road for ten years, two-eight-seven Hunken Shortcut Road. And I love the community. I love the river. And I, I just, matter of fact, I think I'll probably be buried there at Malaca, right across from my house, right across the fence. So that's how much I like it here. But the Dunn's Creek Bridge, the new one when it was built, they removed the, the concrete ramp. And I'd been using it since I came down here. Well, I, I waited and waited for them to reinstall it. Really, there was no reason to remove it for the construction project because I've done construction my entire life, starting with I-70 across Indiana when I was fifteen years old. And as a pipe fitter for fifty years now. But they did remove it and always before, there was seven to ten cars parked there at that ramp. So it did get a lot of use for a one, it's actually a one and a half car ramp. There's a lot of room on either side of the concrete to walk to your boat. And it was a real slow slope going out at Dunn's Creek where I could use it. I've got a bad back, congestive heart failure and all kinds of other health issues. I won't go into, I don't have time on three minutes. But at any rate, if you would consider trying to implement a, a program in the short term, for me and a lot of other people that have four-wheel drive trucks, just getting permission from the state, whoever owns it and controls it, to take a truckload of rock and put there where there's kind of about a two-foot little slope there. I can do, I can get out of my truck, but I won't go in there because I don't want to be hassled. You know, I don't want the police coming out and telling me I'm trespassing. I don't, I don't need that in my old age. But if we could get permission to do that in the long term, possibly working with the state for grants to, to put another ramp in there and it needs here. Johnny Morse is gonna build this attraction at Malaca. And that's fine as long as it's done correctly. But now when BASS and Wolfson and all the tournaments are in town and guys are practicing fishing, and I used to fish a lot of tournaments, uh, I know that, you know, we need the extra ramp. And I'll try and get off here real quick. But I want to thank you for your time and, and your patience and your returning the answer to the emails.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jim. Don't, don't leave just yet. Mr. Jim, don't leave just yet. And, and I did receive your email the second one. We talked a, a while back about this and also I think about the issue on your road. Um, I have been in contact with Representative Payne and said that, you know, there was a ramp there and during the construction, they're not able to use it. And, and also the fire departments use that area for training and stuff like that, uh, to be able to use, to get water out of the river and things like that. So that space under there is needed and definitely a ramp. Because if you know in Malaca, we, you know, we've got the Drayton Island ramp, which is gonna be rebuilt, but no parking, okay? And we're working on the Georgetown Park to see if we can put a ramp there. But even if you go to Malaca, it's very limited parking, right? And then you go to Shell Harbor, nice ramp, limited parking there. So we're all kinda, uh, you know, handcuffed down in the south end for good ramps with parking. Crescent City has a really nice ramp and they've added parking also. So anyway, so I did get your email. I will respond and, and try to get some more information. Commissioner Turner, I think you want to make a comment also?
Yes, I had sent you an email back the other day letting you know that the commission at its last meeting had allowed staff to reach out to DOT and ask them, we don't own the property that you're talking about, DOT does. And when they were building the bridge, we actually went to DOT and asked DOT to, to continue the boat ramp. And DOT basically told us they were not in the boat ramp business and they're not starting the boat ramp business because they'd have to put one in on every bridge in the state of Florida they build in the future. So our next quest, just giving you a little history, the next question to them was, is okay, what about us acquiring land? It's not for sale until we finish that bridge because they used it for their laydown area to build the bridge. So now the bridge is done. The commission has all voted by consensus to reach out to DOT and find out is the property now available? If it is, then the first step would be to acquire the property. The next step would be to get permits for the boat ramps and the little lagoon that it would take because the property is right on the end of that canal coming in off of Dunn's Creek. So it definitely takes some permits to get in there and dig a little lagoon and, and put in a two or three boat, boat ramp. And, uh, and then the next step would be to acquire the funding or allocate the funding for it. There may be some fishing fund money. There may be some, there's just, but there's no need in starting the funding part of it until we get to where, number one, is DOT even gonna let us have the land?
Right.
And that's, that's what it all is on. But it has started. I just wanted to let you know that this process has started.
And I appreciate it. And I, and I know here is different than other states. So that's the reason I, I kinda want to come and ask, you know, to, to be involved. And it sounds like you already are. And I appreciate the effort and it's nice living in Putnam County. It really is. About January, February, I like nothing better than to call up and ask my family if it's not smart enough to move to Florida. Thank God not all of them do. It's nice coming here. Nice talking with you. And thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Rawls, did you have a comment?
I just want to say, I, I spoke to Jim the other day and I wasn't at the last meeting, so I, I wasn't aware that we're moving this forward. But I'd ask him to come in and speak to us collectively because, you know, as one commissioner, I can't get anything done. But I, I know that Mr. Hoteling has been involved in this and I actually got him, Mr. Hoteling's number as well to see if they might be able to put their heads together, help to come up with some funding or, you know, push this thing in the right direction. So it sounds like it's moving in the right direction.
Okay. Uh, next speaker, Douglas Hayes.
My name's Douglas Hayes, three-six, two-sixteen Huron Avenue, Satsuma. This is public comment in regards to agenda items or is this our? Anything. Anything comment, okay. I've been looking into some different things. Have a concern. The Port Authority project that you have going on, the point of contact is the grant writer and the county administrator. Why isn't the Port Authority managing that project? Wouldn't that make sense for the barge port?
The property is owned by the Port Authority.
Say again?
It's owned by the Port Authority.
Yes, but apparently when I, when I, I asked where the point of contact, who do I talk to? And it's either the grant writer or the county administrator. Um, I've got some ideas that might be able to, to improve, on the improvements. And you would think that there would be somebody in the Port Authority that's managing the improvements on the barge port versus the county, the grant writer. What's, why is he in, in the point of contact other than the funding end, end of it? At the same time, um, you've got, the grant writer is in these point of contact issues, but then you have to hire somebody in an advisory status of twenty-seven thousand dollars to find money for the barge port project. Not counting the fact that when you made that decision, that most of your grant availabilities, the deadline had been met. So you kinda picked a bad time to, to make that decision, especially the grants that I found out about. Basically, the grant writer, I informed him about the, the federal DOT one. There's even more. I just haven't contacted him yet about it. But I was gonna look for the Port Authority or, or the point of contact that would be part of that project. Okay, the next thing. Friends of, we're stricken for manpower and money. In the real world, in some counties, you have the Friends of Parks and Recreation, Friends of Animal Services, Friends of the Library System. That's your citizen participation, not counting the fact that that's another funding mechanism. You could have Friends of Public Works Boat Ramp Division part, where the people that are actively fishing, perhaps it's a fishing club, that when you set up a boat ramp and you have the Friends of might volunteer their time to clean up instead of putting the burden on the county, even though it would be a county-owned, you know, boat ramp. But that, that gives potential to alleviate some of the tax burden. And then the MSBU, where I'm at a loss is that the citizens want more maintenance on their road. So they're gonna pay a premium and then you farm it out to private contract when the citizens have no say in the contract. So they're not getting the return on their investment. Why wouldn't the county just receive the money and perform more maintenance versus the allotted time? Wouldn't that be cost effective so that the MSBU is basically, I, I realize you'll have to maybe more staff or more equipment. But if, if you're performing the MSBU versus theoretically privatizing is supposed to be more efficient, but apparently it's not because they're in the for-profit business and the contract, you know, because otherwise, I guess our taxes would have to go up on our road maintenance because if the private contract is so expensive, then why are you inexpensive? I took up my three minutes, so I'll just see you in a couple of weeks.
Got a couple of questions. If I'm, unless I'm mistaken, most of the road maintenance comes from our gasoline taxes, correct? Not your ad valorem taxes. So Commissioner Rawls?
I'll address this reversal. MSBU is really a decision made by the citizens that live inside that MSBU. I think where the, the commission failed them was we didn't, over, year over year over year, bring them in and sit them down and say, look, costs are going up and you guys have to realize that services are gonna diminish it to almost nothing if you don't pay more money. This year was the year of reckoning and all, you know, everything came home at one time. So the citizens are seeing what it really truly costs to have a certain prescriptive level of service. If next year those costs go up, that level of service will go down unless the cost, unless the, the revenue goes up. It's, it's very simple math. In the case of, of the MSBU at St. John's Harbor, they, they went for so long without having any increases in revenue. And then the other problem that they have is they're being charged by, per, per a lot, not by parcel. You can have a parcel that has five lots in it and pay five shares. So there, there's a lot of issues with, with that MSBU that I, I think, you know, and we'll, we'll discuss that at, at the afternoon meeting. But the MSBU is per the citizens' board and their appetite for whatever it is they want to provide. Regarding the Port Authority, we don't have a Port Authority manager right now. The, the county administrator fills that role. We have hired a consultant. They are looking at a study right now. You know, until that, that study's completed, we really don't know what we have, whether it's good, bad, or anything in between, or what needs to be added into. So I think this is just one of those wait-and-see situations. They're, they're already on board. They've just got to do their job. I would encourage you to reach out to them if you have ideas for grants that they might be able to look into. But they're the ones that, that we're listening to right now.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Rawls kinda hit the nail on the head a little bit on the MSBU. But with a little different take from my point of view, Mr. Hayes. Citizens Committee runs the MSBU's and a couple of years ago, we tried to bring these in for a landing with a minimum standard. Some, some committees were deciding upon their own not to provide you a service, although you pay a fee. That ain't right, is it, Mr. Hayes?
Absolutely not.
I don't need an answer. I'm just making a comment. You had your time. I'm gonna have mine. Okay? So here's how it goes. The Citizens Committee, we tried to fix it last year. We ran out of time. So we mailed out over thirty thousand letters this year and we got it fixed. And like Commissioner Rawls says, it is a day of reckoning. Unfortunately, in some of our MSBU's, the price went down, which was a good thing, okay? Because the economy of scale and contractors were able to do the business in their area. But we do need to have a minimum standard. There is no reason, no reason in this world to have a, a mowing apparatus or availability inside an MSBU for mowing right-ofways and have eight-inch trees growing in those right-ofways. Should never have happened. If you mow it one time, mow it once every year, mow it once every two years, find a minimum standard. That tree's not gonna be there and doesn't have to come back on the citizens of Putnam County to remove those trees at the cost they are today. One simple maintenance would have solved that whole. have solved that whole problem. So that's what we're finding out. We're truing up our MSBU's. The Citizens Committee has a lot of input. You might say they don't, they do. Trust me, they do. And they, they wanted minimum standards too, and they needed these prices to be adjusted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Douglas. Go ahead.
The question I'm asking is privatization of the MSBU versus the county performing the service, would that be cost-effective for the citizens?
Yeah, I don't think so.
You're, you're contracting them out?
They're private contractors.
Right, but...
All right, thank you, Douglas. Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion of the meeting, and Commissioners are neglected to address under appointments. We need to set and appoint the Value Adjustment Board.
Mr. Chairman, I think historically, the Value Adjustment Board has always been the chairman and the vice chairman over the last several years. I would like to just see that continue rolling.
Okay. Does somebody wanna make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make...
Okay, we got...
I'll make the motion that the chairman is, is part of the Value Adjustment Board. The vice chair is part of the adjustment, Value Adjustment Board, and Todd Dixon at large would be part of the Value Adjustment Board.
Okay, we got a proper motion, we got a proper second under discussion. So my first question, it says term expires in August of 2023. Okay, so we'll renominate again, because I will not be chairman in August of 2023.
You don't know that.
I'm pretty sure I know that. And then you said Todd Dixon did not wish to serve.
He doesn't wish to serve? Okay.
Okay, will you remove that portion from the...
I amend my motion to remove Todd Dixon's name off the Value Adjustment Board.
Okay. Any other, we got a proper, got amended motion, amended second to remove Todd Dixon. We'll move forward the nomination or recommendation of the chair serve as the chairman of the board, serve as the chair of the Value Adjustment Board, and the vice chair serve as a vice chair. So any further discussion? All in favor, and I kept saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose, same sign.
Mr. Chairman?
What kinda timeframe do we have to fill this? What's the date? Do we have another meeting, or do we need to try to, it's gonna be hard to do something today?
We have an August 5 Value Adjustment Board that is not on any agendas, or it's not on any schedules, and the people, members of the Value Adjustment Board haven't heard about it? That's next week.
Well, it's gonna have to change.
Well, who's changing it? Well, no, it doesn't come, Sarah. I'm sorry. It comes from the chairman of that Value Adjustment Board.
And that may be. She, we're, we're learning here on this and other dyes, but, but we'll see what we can do about finding out when the actual date will be, and make sure, there's some time today, and if we need to make any adjustments before the 2:00 or the 5:05, we'll make sure that you, you folks are aware of that.
Well, we need to have time to find somebody to fill Todd's shoes. I was very unaware until just now that he wasn't wanting to do it again next year. He's been a valuable member of that committee, very valued member, and he's not gonna be easily replaced.
Amen.
Value Adjustment Board. So, you know, we're gonna have to take, give some thought to this one.
I, I absolutely agree. So first of all, let me find out exactly what's going on as far as dates and times, and we'll get back before the 2:00 session this afternoon.
Thank you.
Okay, usually those, they come from Tim Parker's office, don't they?
I believe that's probably where it will come from, so I'll reach out to either Mr. Parker, Mr. Davis, and see if we can get an answer today.
Okay. Commissioner Harvey?
Don't we get the, we get the school board member too, right?
Yeah, I saw in there that it will be, yeah, it'll be Sandra Gil Yard with an alternate of Bud McGinnis, and then Judd Neufeld would be the citizens representing the school board.
We would have a quorum then, if we needed to. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll move down to county administrator comments?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
County attorney?
Sorry, I'm gonna surprise you, I got one. I just wanna make sure that under the consent agenda where we were, where you had voted to approve inter-local agreements, there was actually just a Scrivener's error where we didn't include the city of Palaca. And then that's the handout that I walked out, and I know that each of you know that. I just wanna make sure that for the public's purposes, they understand that one of the inter-local agreements that you voted on was the Palaca agreement that was handed out today. And then we'll include a copy of that along with today's minutes. There's no significant changes. It was just left off inadvertently. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Rich. Okay, we move down to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Rawls?
Yeah, I just wanna say, I missed the meeting last time because I was under the weather. And then since then, my wife and I both have, you know, each had a parent diagnosed with cancer. And the amazing thing about being in Putnam County is the fact that you're able to move through the system at a rapid rate, getting care and, you know, being able to move through. So Dr. Caravella is a hero in our, our estimation. He's really stepped up and done some wonderful things for our family members. But I just wanna say that, you know, just anybody that does pray to please keep our family in their prayers, because we need a lot of support.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Rawls. Commissioner Harvey?
I have none, sir.
Commissioner Turner?
I have nothing, Dan.
Okay, yeah, and I'll add to Dr. Caravella. I don't know him as well as my brother and some others, but we have somebody with his skills and talents in Putnam County, and he could be anywhere in the world that he wanted to be with his practice. And he's brought a top-notch cancer facility and staff to Putnam County, and he's just a true hero for, for Putnam County. Commissioners, I don't really have any comments. We do have a 2:00 transportation meeting, and we do have a 5:05 public hearing. So at this time, if there's no further comments, I'll just recess this meeting until this afternoon.